Meeting has come to order. It is 6:32 PM, Monday, August 20th. All board members are present. We have Mr. Higgins on the phone. Please rise for the flags.
(Inaudible) from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any objections to approving the agenda? Agenda is approved. We do have three recognitions tonight. Dr. Browder, would you like to announce those, or do you want me to?
Yes, ma'am. Be more than happy to. First item, I believe, is on the agenda memorandum number two, recognition of Joanna Hubbard for winning the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. School Board member Kathleen Plunkett will read that particular memo.
Would Joanna Hubbard please come forward? The White House recently announced that baggage middle school teacher Joanna Hubbard is one of 97 winners of the 2011 Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. The award is recognized as the nation's highest honor for teachers of math and science. Joanna has taught science at baggage for the past two years. Previously, she taught, she provided science curriculum and instructional support to the district as a science teacher expert and taught seventh grade science at Hanshu Middle School. Hubbard led the district-wide effort to integrate science notebook use in science kit training. She helped focus the award-winning C-Train field trip, taking 400 students per day on an excursion focused on energy. This honor is a validation of the passion that Joanna has for science education, professional development, and community service. As baggage principal Jean Fisher stated, Joanna has traveled all over the world to live and breathe science, including participating in scientific dives at the Makundo Station in Antarctica and tropical illogical studies in the Caribbean. She successfully integrates art and technology with science. In addition, her dedication as an eighth grade teacher at baggage, she is a leader in promoting science education outside the classroom by volunteering at local organizations like the Imaginarium, Audubon, Alaska, and Girl's Grouse. The Board officially recognizes Joanna Hubbard for winning the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. Her outstanding service to the district students and the example she sets for her colleagues is admirable and greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Madam President, the next item is memorandum number three. It's recognition of Mark Elstrom for winning the National Milken Educator Award. School Board member Natasha Von Imhoff will read that particular memo.
Would Mark Elstrom please come forward?
Mark Elstrom, a Romig Middle School math and science teacher, was awarded the National Milken Educator Award during a surprise ceremony last fall. Elstrom received $25,000 from the Milken Family Foundation as part of this award. Elstrom is entering his 12th year of teaching at Romig. He also serves as the school's wrestling and track and field coach. Romig's principal Sven Gustafson said Elstrom is a great role model for middle school students, and many students request to enroll in his classes. In a letter of support, Gustafson wrote, "Mark has a knack for turning both kids around academically and behaviorally. He inspires students to do more, be better, and try things that they are not comfortable with. Mark has turned lives around and continues to do so. And he is an exceptional motivator, educator, and person." Wait, there's more.[373.31][373.31](Laughter). Referred to as the Oscars of Teaching by Teacher Magazine, the Milken Educator Awards were created in 1985 to reward, retain, and attract the highest caliber professionals to our nation's schools. A committee formed by the Alaska Department of Education and Early Development identifies and evaluates teachers and administrators for the award. The Milken Family Foundation makes the final selection based on educational talent, accomplishments beyond the classroom, leadership, and engaging and inspiring presence. The $25,000 awards can be used in any way recipients choose.[408.28][408.28](Vic) Vacation to Hawaii. Up to 100 winners nationwide are selected each year, and Elstrom is one of eight ASD teachers who have won the Milken Award since 2000. And I believe that you get to go to LA and meet all the other teachers, don't you? Okay.[424.28][424.28](Laughter). Okay, last fall, the Board recognized Elstrom for being named a finalist for the 2011 Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. You're just gathering all the awards, apparently. The Board officially recognizes and congratulates Mark Elstrom for winning the prestigious Milken Educator Award. The Board will also take this opportunity to present Elstrom with the Glas Oblisk Trophy on behalf of the Milken Family Foundation. Congratulations.[450.11][450.11](Applause).
Madam President, members of the Board, the next item on the agenda is the ASD memorandum number 35, recognizing West High School students for outstanding volunteer work. School Board member Tam Augusta-Giesler will read the memo.
Okay, would Idan Posposil, Chris Rush, Joel Snapper, Brooke Marston, Kelly French, and Samantha Manser please come forward? Six students in West High School's International Baccalaureate Program partnered with the Malawi Children's Village to raise funds for Gracious Secondary School located near Mangochi, Malawi. With the help of Anchorage residents, Dr. Tom and Ruth Nicewander, West students Idan Posposil, Chris Rush, Joel Snapper, Brooke Marston, Kelly French, and Samantha Manser hosted a Black Tide Jazz Event this past February to raise money. They raised approximately $16,000 for the school. The students also privately paid for a trip to Malawi this summer where they volunteered at Gracious. The funds raised purchased paint, textbooks, school supplies, and chemistry and computer equipment, including a new laptop, projector, speakers, and flip video cameras. GCI donated 12 refurbished computers so that each teacher at Gracious could have their own computer. While in Malawi, the West students worked with each teacher and taught them useful computer skills. The money raised was also used to take the Gracious senior class on a field trip to the Mua Mission. All six students expressed their desire to return to Malawi to do further volunteer work. The Board officially recognizes and thanks these students for their outstanding volunteer efforts. Their dedication to helping those less fortunate is admirable. And I understand part of your group is gone because they've left for college? Yes.
The rest of us are college.
The other four.
That brings us to announcements. Are there any announcements, board members or staff? Other than the fact that tomorrow night is a school night? That brings us to public comment. We have 11 people signed up. The first one is Natalie Fraser. And I'm going to make an announcement that we have two podiums on both sides of the boardroom. You can choose either one. If anybody needs special accommodations, we do have those available as well. So Natalie, are you here? Okay, go ahead and come forward.
Hello, I'm Natalie.
Natalie, can you just pull the mic down?
Oh, sorry.
There you go. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Natalie Fraser, and I'm a state champion in the Battle of Books program. I think Battle of Books is a great program because it's a fun way to read. I learned I'm still learning skills like teamwork and working hard. When you do Battle of the Books, you have to really commit to it. So many times since I've been watching TV, I've read Battle of the Books book. It's important to encourage reading because reading builds both imagination, knowledge, and is one of the most important skills you could learn. Several times someone will be talking, I'll say, "Oh yeah, I was just reading about that." Battle of Books also helps kids like us get better at reading. My friend Ellie was saying, "Well, four is super slow, but now after reading all those books several times, I'm a lot better." I mentioned teamwork earlier. Battle of Books teaches you how to be a team. You may not always agree with them, but you respect their opinions and abilities. I think that's a skill you need and that Battle of Books teaches. In Battle of Books, you work hard and try your best. There are 15 books, and you need to know them well. This usually means reading them over and over. Last year, I read each book about 12 times and it was hard, but in the end, I was so proud of myself. If you kept funding to Battle of Books, all this no longer happens. The life skills we, the children, learn from this is worth it. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie.[738.01][738.01](Applause). And I did notice that there are several people signed up to speak on Battle of the Books, and we're very happy to have you here and testify. Although, I'm wondering if there's something going around that we're taking away Battle of the Books. I'm not sure if that's true or why you're here to testify, but Ms. Guest, do you want to maybe clarify some things?
Yeah, and I always look forward to the testimony, although no one can beat the last one. So, last year, there was a lot of miscommunication around the funding of Battle of the Books because the staff did an amazing job at figuring out how not to pull teachers out of the classrooms, but how to continue Battle of the Books and reduce funding at the same time. And if they can do that district ride, we're, it'd be great. So, it isn't cut, it's going to be refigured a little bit so we don't have to pull teachers out of the classroom and pay per diem, but we're not eliminating it whatsoever. It will be the same as it was last year. But that rumor did go on in the last budget conversation. Looking at Ed and Linda, if I got anything? Okay.
Can I add something? I love Battle of the Books. You have a proponent here. I taught Battle of the Books as a parent. That's how my school got around it, is I was the parent that taught it for the full year. I don't know of anything that we're going to get rid of Battle of the Books. If anything, we are going to continue to support this. So, you are more than welcome to sit and speak, but you're speaking to the choir.
Okay, with that, our next person signed up is Elizabeth Hancock. Are you here, Elizabeth?
There you are.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Hancock. I would like to speak to you guys about the Project Kala, the Boys Project. I am a parent of a boy who attends the program. He did it both at our school, but he also attended the summer program. I also work at the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School. I'm their administrative assistant, so I see my kids on a daily basis. And the impact that Project Kala makes in my own child, but also all of the boys in our school, is really big because not all of our boys have a good family. And I was going to have my boy here, but he's not here. So, I would like you guys to encourage to accept their grant proposal for their continuation of their program. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. David Neese, are you here?
And I had actually signed up for two topics, but it looks like we got a three-minute limit on each, or just total?
We, I'm not sure, I don't remember if I explained this at the last meeting or not, but we took, we used to have two spots in the agenda for testimony. One was for non-agenda items, and one was for agenda items. We ended up rarely, if ever, using the second time for testimony, so we just kind of combined them both.
Well, I was just clarifying it because I know at the last meeting, Dan got to speak three minutes. It was three minutes, so, yeah, I had three minutes, right? Total?
Yeah, and that was, yeah, that was my fault.
All right, no, that's fine. My name's David Neese. I taught math in the Anchorage School District from, I think, 1979 until 2010. And I have a grave concern with the math program that you guys have still got in place, everyday math. I was pleased to see in the superintendent's strategic planning that you will be moving on and replacing or completely getting rid of everyday math and middle school math. Pleased to see that. I'm a little concerned that yet another year of time will go by and your children that are failing the most at math are not being offered an alternate curriculum. I think probably it would be wise to take your worst schools, give them an alternate curriculum, and let them try it because you've got nothing to lose, because they're not doing well with what they're doing right now. The second item I came in was, I wrote earlier in the week to the superintendent of the school board expressing concerns over the notification of parents about public school option. Got a great, well-reasoned statement back from the superintendent, and I think he makes good points. I think you guys hit all of the marks as far as, you know, letter of the law, notification and stuff. But I'm very concerned because in the school board's mission statement, in your vision as school board members, you say that you are going to offer effective school choice options. You are also going to involve the parents and the community as informed partners. I don't think you did either one of those. I don't think you have effective school options if you have a long waiting list for optional schools. Three of the four mothers on this school board have their children in optional programs. Probably had to wait, play lottery, get in, got motivated, said, "Hey, I'm going to come in here and make a difference for my kid." Not every parent's got that time of day to do that. When you do not let the parents in your lower-income Title I schools know that their school is failing, and don't explain it to them in simple English, "Hey, this school's failed. You've got two options, and we'll provide transportation," you didn't do your job. You're not hitting either one of your school board vision statement items. It's a personal thing to me. An education got all of you where you are. Took hard work, took dedication from your parents, took involvement. Education is the way out of poverty. When you do not give people a choice to get out of a bad, failed school, you have 16 schools that are in that category. Eight of them are in Class V, the worst you can get. Some of them have been in Class V for four years. Board still does nothing. Make it simple. Say, "Hey, kids, school tomorrow. We'll give you an option. Take a piece of paper. If you don't want to be here, we will let you go."
Kelly Leipnix, apologize if I got your last name wrong.
That was actually pretty close. I was going to come up here and testify on behalf of Battle of the Books, but apparently there's no need. So, I just want to say thank you for recognizing the value in a great program, and thanks for everything you guys do every day, because I know it's not easy to be in your shoes. Thank you.
And thank you for coming out to speak. Does that mean Gabby won't be coming up? Okay, thanks, Gabby. Come on down.
Good evening, and thank you for hearing me. I brought the big K for Project Kala. It stands for our boys. It's at the basket and for boy. And I'm here to encourage the board to accept the funds that were a part of, that are a part of Project Kala on behalf of our Alaska Native boys. The clubs that we run at school have three main purposes. One is that we bring in Alaska Native speakers and guests and artists that are contemporary so that our Native boys have a role model that's living, successful, viable, contemporary. You don't have to go to the museum to see us. We are here. And the boys get to see that, and they get to celebrate their culture and who they are. And then, it's in a very non-academic setting, so they get to have fun, and they express themselves. And then, the SEL goals come in, and they really want to come to school because they have a sense of belonging, they have a sense of pride in who they are, and all of this really contributes to a lot of academic success, as well as personal growth. So, I would really encourage the board, if you're at all considering not accepting the funds, and I don't know that you are, I'm just here to really encourage you to accept the funds and see Kala be a very successful part of the district, one of their programs. Thank you.
Thanks, Martha. Steven and Danielle Ohms, did you still wish to come up and talk about Battle of the Go ahead and pull the mic down there so we can hear you. Thank you.
The reason why I started Battle of the Books was because my brothers told me to, but the reasons, ah, never mind.[1352.01][1352.01](Laughter). The point why I redid Battle of the Books was because it actually had a purpose, because to me, I didn't really like reading books because it didn't have a purpose to me, but Battle of the Books does. And I usually started a lot of books, but I never finished any of the books. And I never really finished my reading logs that much until Battle of the Books came. I don't really have anything else to say.
Are you Danielle?
Yes, I'm Danielle. And so, I know, I just wanted to thank you. I just heard that you guys are keeping the program, is what I understand, so appreciate that. It was a battle getting Steven to read for many, many years, and he loves reading now, but only Battle of the Books, in that he finds authors that he likes, and he continues reading with those. So, it's been a wonderful program, one of the best ones, and our teachers at Aquarian, Cindy and Linda, have been awesome in supporting this, so I'm glad that you guys are supporting it, too. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm still a bit puzzled as to where the rumor came from, again, especially at this time in the year. But, at any rate, Sean Brosnahan?
Hi, I'm Sean. Thanks for listening to us. Can I ask a couple questions instead of just speech? So, the, you said the funding for the, you're looking at different ways of doing this? Is that correct?
I'll answer, and Linda's probably the best one, and that probably can talk to her group afterwards, but there was a reduction in funding last year, but it was because we moved the battle to later in the afternoon, so we didn't need to pull teachers out, so we didn't need to put subs in.
Okay.
So, it wasn't getting rid of it. So, on a budget line item, someone could have, and last year during the budget process, people read it as getting rid of battle. What we did was just moved the battle time in some ways, and that I'm looking for.
So, this year, the funding will be held at this level?
Yeah, it's the same. We passed the budget last spring and hasn't changed since then.
And it'll be done in the middle of the week so all the kids can participate?
That, I do not know.
I don't think we firmed up the dates, actually, when it is going to be taking place, but the intent was that it was beyond the regular school day so that we didn't have students, excuse me, who were challenged to be pulled from class, as well as staff who were going to be able to support the students.
Okay. That was one of the questions that I had, was, I think during the school day, all the kids are there after the school day. It's a little harder to get everybody there with the number of students that you're talking about. I think if you moved it to a weekend per se, or after the school day, you may have more difficulty getting those numbers there. So, anyways, with due respect, I've had a fabulous time with Battle of the Books. I'm a proud father of one of the young men who's been involved in it, and it's one of the few programs that you have that makes a star out of an academic and not just the sports people, which we're also involved in. So, thank you very much.
And I think really a kind of a big bang for the book, we get out of Battle of the Books. Linda Juilliard?
It's marvelous to have so many fans of Battle of the Books here, and I've been involved for 19 out of my 20 years in the district with Battle. And I guess my big concern kind of echoes what Sean said, that, and again, it's based on my years of experience, it's very difficult, especially when you're talking about nine- and 10-year-olds, to ask them to start later in the day. I worry, too, about our children who oftentimes don't have the same level of parental involvement that you're seeing here tonight, to be able to get to the battles and participate. So, those are my concerns, and I'm going to echo Sean again, that it's an academic competition that encourages our children to read, which is such a huge focus, and I would want to do everything in the school district's power to keep encouraging that. And I hate to think about losing a child who might not have the ability to get there and stay as a nine- or 10-year-old until 7 o'clock at night. And I know that it's easy for us because we're grownups, although it's hard for me sometimes, but I think it's good to keep it going later in the evening. I mean, I think it's good to keep it going during the day instead of switching to later in the evening, and I just worry about that level of participation, and I'm not sure if you have answers for that, or if it was strictly a cost-cutting measure, or if it was really with the best interests of children at heart. And I didn't mean that to sound cruel, but I just, you know?
No, the concept wasn't, it's not enough of a savings, honestly, to make a dent in our $20 million difference. It really was, we're pulling kids and teachers out of classrooms, and we're trying to be very deliberate to keep kids and teachers in classrooms as much as possible because those children, and my child's teacher was Battle of the Books teacher, so I know that, that means she leaves the classroom. And so, all the students remaining don't have, you know, have a substitute for that afternoon, and we're really trying to reduce that. You bring up, I think, a good point, and we all have to watch it and say, "Okay, how do we continue to make it accessible and available to everyone?" So, I appreciate, on behalf of the board, that point. But, yeah, the thought of it wasn't a budget thought that just happened to come out during the budget time. It was, how do we keep teachers in the classrooms?
And I understand that, and definitely that's where I want to be, is in the classroom. But I, too, I recognize that this is an academic competition, that it reinforces our love of reading. I'm not a real sporty person, but I know that a lot of children travel for sports. I know that sometimes coaches are pulled out for those things, and it has tremendous value. But I think we need to recognize the academic value of this, and again, watch and make sure that all of our children can participate. We had huge, and have had huge, numbers for years, and I would hate to see that fall off. So, thanks.
Thanks, Linda. Next person is Dan Loring. Dan?
Superintendent Browder, members of the board, thank you for letting me speak tonight. 90% proficiency by the year 2020. Fantastic vision. Mr. Browder, I really commend you for bringing that to this, this district. I've got a, just kind of a long list of things I'd like to talk about tonight. Battle of the Books. Watch your battle because next year, the budget's going to be under track again. We're going to give, continue to give, continue to spend money that we don't have. If we don't get more money from the legislature, programs are going to be cut for kids that need programs the most, including Battle of the Books. So, so watch, watch the board, watch your programs because they're going to be targeted. AYP. I'm wondering what happened to the AYP press release? What happened to the full-page ad? Three minutes to speak. At the last meeting, I'd asked about whether or not we continue to have three minutes to speak on non-agenda items or we had three minutes to speak on non-agenda items plus agenda items, and you were gracious to tell me that it was going to be, as it has been, three minutes on non-agenda items and three minutes on agenda items. That has changed. Okay? And so effectively, what the board has done is eliminate, eliminated public and parent participation in board meetings. You've also, in my opinion, restricted public and parent communication by this seating arrangement. You can't see who's talking. You can't see through the post, and I don't have any idea what the need was to create a barrier between the public and the parents and the students and the board. So I would encourage you to rethink that barrier and maybe put it back the way it was or something that's a little bit more friendly. 21st century free, free after-school meal. Don, I just got to continue to just not understand it. There's nobody. No parent makes $62,000 a year. Those kids' parents are making $20,000, $22,000 a year.
Testimonies not to attack board members.
I didn't attack. I'm questioning his, his wisdom, not attacking. And finally, I've got 14 seconds left. I will talk about MECCAC and the elimination of MECCAC without any public participation. 37-year committee, this school board eliminated that only parent and community advisory committee with no community participation. Thank you.
MECCAC has not been eliminated, just for point of clarification. The, the testimony, we may end up having to put back on the agenda, the non-agenda item testimony and agenda item testimony if it's going to be a problem. We eliminated that because it was rarely used. Secondly, the, the board setup is, we were hoping to generate more dialogue between the, making it more user-friendly between the board and staff, which is what our, our board meetings are about.
For 37 years, MECCAC has been part of the school board's public policy?
Point of order.
Oh, I just created a point of order to, to, to erroneous statement of your president.
Mr. Loring?
It has been eliminated from policy.
MeCCAC is not eliminated.
Would you like me to bring you your...
And I can discuss this with you after the meeting if you'd like.
Right here. You eliminated MECCAC from policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Do anything else, Katie? Okay, that is the end of public comment, and that brings us to consent agenda. Are there any items to be polled?
Board members?
If we don't poll it, can we still have a comment on each of these items or a comment...
No. If it's to be discussed, it needs to be polled. But feel free to...
Okay. I mean, I just have very small comments, but I'd like to make them. Okay. And I'd like to move to poll.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to move ASD memorandum number 20, which is the acceptance of the grant award Anchorage School District...
Ms. Van Hymoff, I'm sorry, we just need to know which ones you're going to poll, and then there'll be a motion for the consent agenda and then...
Memo 20, memo 38.
Any other items? Okay, we've pulled memos number 20 and memorandum number 38. Can I get motion to...
I move that we accept the consent agenda items number one, two, and five and not items three and four, I'm sorry, and also accept six, seven, and eight. So again, that we accept one, two, five, six, seven, and eight and not three and four.
And please note that memorandum number five, Personnel Report, has addenda. It's been moved and seconded. Pat, your vote?
Yeah.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item three, Ms. Van Hymoff?
I am fine with this grant, but what I would like... What am I, what am I reading? What do I say?
Just moving to approve.
I'm moving to approve ASD memorandum number 20, Acceptance of the Grant Award Anchorage School District Pre-Kingergarten Project.
Good.
Okay. All right, so, do I need to go with number 38 as well and say that all in one?
No.
Okay. All right. Again, the comment that I have with this particular grant is that we need to make sure to ensure future dollars in a drawing, in a federal environment that dollars will, may not be there in the future, is two things. Number one, we have to make sure that there's parent involvement. Now, I understand that there is now to some degree, but I'm talking almost like going, I don't know if this is possible, but going out to the community and bringing them in. It's one thing to have a pizza party and offer dinner to entice families to come, but that sometimes is not enough. In order for this grant to really work, it's not just enough to have kids come to these pre-kindergarten classes, but parents have to be involved for, during the pre-kindergarten years, kindergarten and so forth, and we teach kids young, we have to teach parents young. That's the first thing. And the second thing is that we need to be able to test these kids in the future to see how well they do compared to the other kids in similar demographics that did not participate. To make sure that the effectiveness of this program and the dollars are well-spent so we can ensure them again and again in the future, we have to show that there is greater achievement by the kids that participate. And it's not just their kindergarten test, going into kindergarten, they know their numbers and colors. It's like, how do they, well, do they do in first grade? How well do they do in second grade academically? Now, I, I did get answers to some of these questions, and staff, by the way, they're excellent, and I appreciate it immensely, the time that you took. But I'm saying this for the record because I, I am adamant that if, we want these grants to continue, we have to make sure that those two components, the parent involvement and the testing in the future, are, are met. And so that's what I feel about memo number 20.
Any more comment on memo 20? Seeing none, members can proceed to vote. Mr. Higgins, your vote? And memorandum 20 passes seven to zero. Next item, Ms. Van Hymoff, you polled as well.
Okay. So I move to, move to approve memorandum 38, Acceptance of the Grant Project Kalal, is how you pronounce it?
Kalal, but do you know what? I just said memorandum 20 passed. That was the one that, that was first on the agenda, but you spoke to...
No, I spoke to the kindergarten, which is the...
The kindergarten. Did I say it right?
They're both very similar.
Okay, so that was number 20.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we're on number, memorandum 38. Okay, thank you.
Again, the, I just want to make sure that the community partners, which is Cook-in-the-Tribal Council, tribal, Alaska Native Science Engineering, Alaska Native Center, ASRC, and I'm sorry, I can't pronounce, Chugakmut? I see how they are partnering with this grant. It is imperative that we leverage as much as possible with these other organizations to make this particular grant as robust and as effective as possible. And I see that they're allowing us to use their facilities and there's some engagement with marketing and so forth, but as much, please utilize this money and engage these partners as much as possible. Number one. Number two, get parent involvement. I loved your testimony. Thank you so much. I hope we can clone parents like you, Elizabeth, 100 times. And if you can be an advocate in your community to get more parents involved, because you made a comment up here that not all parents are like you, well, we look to you, people like you and your friends, to get into your school and to get parents involved, because we can't do it up here alone and the school district can't do it. We look to the community. And then thirdly, I want to make sure that we follow and track these kids to make sure that this money is well-spent so we can ensure it's continued, continued receipt in the future. And, and I am in the grant community. We're always looking for outcomes. So I look at the school district and I look at the community. The, if you, we will partner by helping accept these grants, but we look all to you to help make sure that these grants are effective and, and the money is being partnered with all these other partner agencies and that we follow with the testing. That's all I have to say.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded, and is there any further comment? Seeing none, members can vote. Mr. Higgins? And memorandum number 38 passes seven to zero. Superintendent's report? Doesn't look like there's anything that we need to cover on that this evening. Board comments or communications? Ms. Plunkett?
I just wanted to comment that I, I had a great visit with the maintenance department, met with most of the staff, and I sent him a note and told him how much I learned, and I realize it's just, just the start, but I wanted to thank staff for all they do associated with it as well, but they did a great job of hosting me and helped me bring up to speed.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that the memorandum that was put forth at the work session earlier about MECCAC was just a opening of the discussion for the board and that the policy committee will be taking this up on their September 4th meeting, and it has not yet been put forward to the board for first or second reading, so this is not a done deal. This is to begin the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Are there further comments or communications? Okay, that brings us back to executive session, and we do have a few more student reinstatements that we need to go back into executive session for after this. Ms. Guess?
You want me to motion?
If there's nothing further, okay, yes, please.
I move, we move back into executive session for the purpose of student reinstatements.
And so this portion of the meeting is adjourned.
Second.
Any objection? Seeing none, we're adjourned.